Welcome, everyone. I, Councilmember Tole Marts, call the Tuesday, July 23, City Council Services Safety and Parks Committee meeting to order. We will start with public comment. There are multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentations, council question and answer periods on each of tonight's agenda items. Members of the public may address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you are on the phone, press star three. If you've joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you... No one's in the room, so I won't do that part. I will wait for a moment to see if anyone raises their virtual hand. Has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Chair Marts, we have no virtual attendees.
Ah. As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to City Council, that's all one word, at isiquawawa.gov. Next up, we will consider approval of minutes.
Chairman Marts, I'd move for approval of the minutes of June 25, 2024.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That carries unanimously. With that, we will move on to our agenda items, and I will say I am very excited because the common theme that we have between both of tonight's items are public input. And, you know, we live and breathe, that is the oxygen to our rocket. You know, you have to have oxygen for rockets, and that public input is the oxygen that when it mixes with the political fuel, gets stuff done. So both of the items this evening are informed quite a bit by public comments. So with that, I will welcome Jeff Watling to the mic as we just take on COM 0020, Enhancing Recreation Programs. And you'll be assisted, ably assisted, by Brian Burton, our Parks and Rec Manager.
Absolutely. Good evening, Chair Marts. Thank you for that introduction. Hope to be part of that fuel tonight. Excited to bring you these two topics from the department. First up, we wanted to talk about a work plan, major work plan priority of this year. I'm realizing, Chris, I need to share my screen, correct? Give me. Did I navigate? It's there. Just need to... Nothing like navigating someone else's laptop. There we go. All right. Thank you again very, very much. First topic tonight is one of our major work plan priorities for 2024, and that is enhancing recreation programs. This is an area of focus this year. Tonight, Brian Burton, Recreation Manager, will be here to really highlight a lot of the major work that we've been doing this year. I just want to note before Brian comes up, this is something that is more than a one-year journey. This is some work that we've been doing for the past couple of years, and in many ways is a mindset and a posture for us even as we move forward. So with public engagement being such a key piece of that engine, we'll stick with the rocket theme. Our department, Parks and Community Services, is immensely diverse, and you maybe have heard me say this before in terms of what we as staff talk a lot about, our core roles and core values, and they're really boiled down into two things. And I think they're two areas that really speak to what an outstanding place this is to live in Issaquah. And the goal I think we all have as council, as mayor, as staff, to make this a livable, a community of choice, somewhere people want to live. And so when you look at everything we do as a department, we really boil down to these two things. We, through your assistance, make investments in places. We steward the parks and open space and trails that these residents own, and then we invest in people through a wide variety of programs and services, much of what you're here tonight with recreation, but also arts and human services. Of note as well, recreation really is an investor of places also. We have four recreation facilities, extremely well-used, you'll hear about tonight, that we both steward and program out of. And that's the community center, the pool, the senior center, and the Pickering Barn. So with that really, really brief introduction, happy to invite our Recreation Manager, Brian Burton, up.
Thank you, Chair Marts. Councilmembers, thank you for having me tonight. Once again, Brian Burton, Recreation Manager over the Parks and Community Services Department. Just a quick point on this pickleball, the touching of paddles, that is a thing. That is, that's sort of good sportsmanship in pickleball right there when you tap your paddle with your partner. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide an update and seek input from the Services Safety and Parks Committee on the framework and key elements of the 2024 Work Plan Initiative of Enhancing Recreation Program. Tonight, we'll be presenting a lot of information, and what we'll be asking of you is feedback on two primary questions. Is there any additional feedback for staff to consider while conducting further internal review and gathering residential input about city recreation programs and services? And as we plan for the '25-'26 budget cycle, are there any considerations or priorities you would like for us to address in our ongoing efforts to enhance recreation programs? I'll be bringing the slide up again at the end of the presentation just for our discussion. Following is an overview of the presentation topics for tonight's discussion. First, I'll be sharing who we are, providing an overview of the Recreation Services Division. Then I'll be providing a brief overview of the modifications made to our operational procedures. I'm also going to share some changes and enhancements we've recently made to some of our programs. Next, we'll spend time looking at our community outreach and survey results. Some of them. There's a lot of them, so we'll cover some of them and highlight them for you. Finally, we'll talk about our next steps in moving forward. Often, recreation services is a lot more than people realize. You know, the Recreation Services Division, as Jeff was talking about, four facilities, five dynamic teams, that is the community center, senior center, pool, Pickering Barn, and then our athletic and field rentals is a team in and of itself, too. Together, these teams provide a wide range of services to residents in Issaquah and the surrounding areas. And I want to take a couple of minutes just to briefly highlight each of these teams for you and the important work that they do. At the community center, we have Kathy Jones and her team, who provide special events, classes, and programs for all ages, ability, and abilities, creating opportunities for residents to connect and engage with one another. Post-COVID and with the installation of wood flooring, the community center continues to see more and more growth in its classes, programs, and events. Things have just really taken off since COVID. Some of the programs offered through the community center are adaptive recreation, preschool, before and after-school care, health and fitness, day camps, drop-in activities, along with a large variety of other classes and programs. The athletics and park rentals team is responsible for organizing and managing youth and adult sports programs and scheduling a variety of outdoor active spaces, such as ball field and picnic shelters located throughout the community. In the last few years, the athletics team has been excited to add a variety of new programs, including indoor and outdoor pickleball and cheer camp, as well as expanding the gliders track and field and cross-country programs to meet the increasing demand from the public for this program. In the athletics and rentals, Jared Bell and his team promote physical health, teamwork, and social interaction among participants of all ages and stages within our community. These programs foster a sense of community pride, encourage active lifestyles, and provide opportunities for community engagement. The Julius Bone Pool has been serving Issaquah since 1972. Fun fact, I learned to swim in that pool as a young lad, and I'm a marginal swimmer, so it speaks volumes. Zach Leson and the aquatic team provide swim lessons and trainings, as well as supporting six high school swim teams and two private swim teams for their swim practices and meets. The pool was excited to once again host underwater egg hunt and is looking forward to providing a new junior lifeguard program this summer. Due to the increase in demand and limited space, staff conducted a pool feasibility study in 2023 to determine whether or not additional capacity could be added to the Julius Bone Pool site. The pool feasibility study has been completed, and staff is conducting education outreach this summer to gauge the public's interest in additional water capacity. And staff is planning to return to council in September to give you an update on some of that work. Since taking over the operation in 2017, the senior center has been a hub for socialization and a place where seniors can connect and be seen. Kirsten May and her team provide a vast array of program offerings that enrich the lives of seniors, provide opportunities for lifelong learning, wellness, and community engagement. The senior center continues to increase its relationship with our community of ever-increasing diverse seniors. For the second time, we are the proud recipients of the King County Veterans Seniors and Human Services Funding Grant, which connects seniors with much-needed resources. Along with the summer fun, a summer full of fun, popular field trips, the senior center is providing meal services four days a week and offering meals that honor holidays and special events that represent our diverse population, senior population. Last but not least, the Pickering Barn is a destination landmark within the city of Issaquah, providing one of the most popular and well-attended farmers markets on the east side, in addition to being a premier site for weddings and a wide variety of special events. Kelly Diane and the Pickering Barn team have recently introduced the EBT and SNAP match programs, which provide food security for those in need. This year, we are also adding a variety of seasonal markets. In 2023, we added the EBT program, and then in 2024 this year, we added the SNAP match, which will match some of those EBT dollars. So up to like $25, you can double your money to buy fresh fruit and produce. Recreation is unique, and it's a market-driven service. Customers choose to participate in the services the city provides because of our reputation as a trusted provider of consistent, safe, and high-quality programming. We are regularly adjusting and adapting to meet the evolving needs and wants of the community. We provide diverse program offerings that are accessible, inclusive, and reflective of the community we serve. Recognizing the trust customers place in us, we seek excellence in customer service by providing well-trained staff and quality services. Part of our work in enhancing recreation programs has been looking at our operations to see where modifications can be made to enhance efficiency, reduce costs, and improve overall performance and customer service by identifying and addressing inefficiencies and outdated processes. Some of our, some recent procedural changes that we'd like to share with you tonight. The scholarship program was revised and adopted by council in 2022 to more equitably serve the ongoing needs of those who do not have the resources to participate in program. As we continue to share this program with our community, we recently enhanced the scholarship program form, making it more accessible and user-friendly for a more wider variety of program participants. With a newly hired Adaptive Recreation Coordinator, we had our coordinator work with the adaptive community in understanding what some of the barriers were on that form. So we worked through that and made the form a little bit simpler to fill out so that it was not, because some people just weren't even filling out because it was just a little too hard. So we worked with them to make that a little bit easier for them to access and then get access to those funds and those resources. This spring, along with input from the Equity Board, we implemented priority registration for some of our more popular programs, allowing residents of Issaquah to register prior to the program opening to the public. This year, priority registration was implemented with both summer camps and swim lessons. Community feedback reinforces that we continue to have a supply, demand, and demand challenge, and there is a need for increased capacity within these programs. The prior registrations helped, but we still have more work to do in order to meet the high demand for these popular programs. This year, staff is also reviewing rental spaces and gathering data on usage patterns, pricing, rental policies and procedures, best practices, and community needs. Following this work, staff will identify areas for improvement and revise the facility rental process and forms to reflect the lessons that we learned through that process. Another part of our work in enhancing recreation programs has been looking at the programs we offer and identifying areas for improvement, leading to enhanced program, enhanced program quality and more effective use of our resources. Some recent program changes and enhancements, there are quite a few, but a few we're going to highlight tonight. The before and after-school program, called Schoolhouse Rec, is a program that began and was created in response to the need for childcare amongst first responders and those needing to work outside the home during COVID. This year, the program that, this was a staff-run program, has now been transitioned to a third-party partner that cares for children before and after school. So that program that was born within COVID to support those that needed to work outside the home has now become a program that is now being run by a third-party partner, and that frees up staff to then lean into some other work, doing a little bit more with less, if you will. Post-pandemic, we were able to bring back a full-time recreation coordinator position. For the first time ever, the coordinator's primary responsibility was dedicated to adaptive recreation programming. Having a full-time recreation coordinator has helped to greatly expand the programs, classes, and events offered within the adaptive community. A few brand-new programs will be offered this year are within the Special Olympics category of swimming, track, and pickleball. In the past, we've offered, we have offered basketball and supported basketball and softball, but we're now adding those additional three sports. As mentioned earlier, the gliders program was expanded to meet increasing, the increase in demand is now serving over 600 participants this year. The summer camps offered through the community center are extremely popular and in very high demand. In 2024, with additional funding approved by council, staff offered an additional summer camp, as well as piling a two-week Spanish-speaking camp. Implementing priority registration and adding camps helped, but did not take care of the whole problem, and this is reflected within the survey responses. Community center staff continues to work toward increasing capacity for residents to these popular programs. And right there with day camps, another popular program is our extremely popular and in high-demand swim lesson program. In 2024, staff increased the capacity by offering more swim lesson classes, along with increasing capacity within the classes currently being offered. Again, as with summer camps, adding additional, adding priority registration and increasing capacity within the swim lesson program helped, but it didn't resolve the issue. Full staff is working to increase capacity within these popular programs so even more children can, and children and people can learn to swim. The Recreation Services Division provides a variety of community events. Coming out of COVID, reestablishing some much-loved events and adding some new ones has been a priority for the team this year. Some of these events include the Down Home Fourth of July that was added this year, and bringing back Boo at the Barn along with the underwater egg hunt pool. As mentioned earlier, the Pickering Barn implemented the EBT and SNAP match programs, which allowed for more access to farm-fresh foods. Along with food access program, we will also be adding some new seasonal markets this year to sort of celebrate different times of the year. And that was through some community feedback and input we got when receiving impact on the farmers markets. People wanted longer and more markets, so we've added some seasonal markets, and we'll be piling those this year, too. The 2024 Farmers Market held its first-ever poster contest, where local artists competed for the opportunity to have their design on the promotional materials for this year's Farmers Market. So when you see the advertisements for that, that was, that was a poster contest, and that was the artist that won it. And this is something we hope to do annually and give artists an opportunity to engage in helping us design some of our marketing materials. In 2023, staff conducted a pool feasibility study that confirmed there is strong desire for additional pool space within our community. In 2024, staff is conducting education outreach to the community to explore the community's interest in the potential for increase in capacity on the existing pool site. As part of the work to enhance recreation programs, staff conducted a community survey from the end of May through June 21. The survey received 818 responses and provided valuable data and feedback. Tonight, staff will be providing a quick high-level overview of some of the information received. And just as a quick note, we did, in your staff packet, we did provide a link that if you want to, there's a lot of information there. It took me a little while to get through it all. So if you, when you get time, or maybe you already have, but if you get a chance to take a look at that. As a quick reminder, well, that was why I gave you my quick reminder. Some of the takeaways from the survey that we'd like to share are: There were strong levels of satisfaction with the existing programs and services, but with room to improve. We'll be discussing some of this on the next slide that I'll be getting to. There is an interest for both new programs and events. There's also interest in expanding existing popular programs and services. There's a strong desire for an increase in marketing outreach that is vital in ensuring residents are aware of programs and services offered. Really interesting to see how people found out about us and that a lot of people would like more venues and more connection points with us to find out what we have going on. There is, there are also limitations due to the high demand and quick fill-up times, which lead to frustration and disappointment in some of our programs.
And Brian, when you say quick, like how quick do some of these programs fill up?
Boy, great question. Swim lessons sometimes fill up in minutes, literally minutes. And camps, probably more in your 15 to 30 minutes, some of them we're filling.
All right.
Yeah, which is too fast, right?
Right. Thank you.
Yeah. With over 600 responses to this question, this table encompasses some feedback on our current programs and how the community feels we are doing. A quick note that I'd like to point out is the neutral or not-applicable column reflects that participants taking part in the survey are not all familiar with the program offerings. As you will see, some of our smaller, more targeted programs have higher percentages of not-applicable due to the limited populations they serve, specifically adaptive recreation, preschool, and youth and before and after-school care. You'll see those numbers are a little higher on the not-applicable. Just they're smaller markets, and a lot of people don't have familiarity with those. As we look at the overall satisfied and unsatisfied columns, we notice a few things. Overall, you'll see that the satisfied side is greater than the unsatisfied side, and that there's room for improvement. Looking at the two columns on the right, we see that there is a higher level of unsatisfied with aquatics and pool, fitness and wellness, sports, and youth summer camp programs. The feedback from the community indicates the need for increased programming with the community asking for more. More events, more programs, and more opportunities to participate in a variety of classes, programs, and events. The Farmers Market was a kind of a fun little stat there to realize that out of all of that, you know, people, a lot of people know about it and enjoy it, right? So it's, that was just a fun, I wanted to point that one out because that sort of surprised me a little bit with that number. Actually, being in, at the market, it surprised me that much, but it was nice to see it reflected. Through the, through the, through the writing questions asking what would increase customer satisfaction and program ideas customers would like to see, four strong threads came out through this feedback. First, there was a desire for more community events and social activities that bring people together and connect our community. We also see an interest in more arts, cultural, and environmental programs. Next, two prominent age groups stood out. Additional teen and senior program is highly desired. There's a strong desire for increased sports and fitness opportunities, including more recreational sports, health and fitness classes and programs, additional sports facilities, and additional fitness equipment in the community center. Interesting, the teen and seniors in that sports and fitness, they did have a lot of that program I just meant, the program I just mentioned, the sport and fitness, was also desired within the teen and senior feedback as well. As mentioned in earlier slides, there's a strong desire for swim lessons, increased pool capacity, and additional aquatic facilities. Enhancing recreation, enhancing recreation programs is an ongoing effort. It's rooted in our past, it's driving our present, and shaping our future. This is not a one-year task, as Jeff mentioned, but it's a continual journey to enrich the lives of our residents through quality recreation services. Some of our key next steps are to assess the feedback given in the survey and identify the areas most requested by the community and to examine opportunities for future programs, to develop budgets and resources to support additional programming, all the while maintaining an open mindset regarding program implementation and paying attention to the existing programs and their life cycles, acknowledging when a program may have reached the end of its life and begun to feel stale or stagnant. If so, staff will need to evaluate whether or not it's time to allocate these program resources into events and possibly other programming opportunities. You know, sometimes things just have a lifespan. And to acknowledge and recognize that when we do, what, what other opportunities can we lean in? Lastly, to develop a cadence for engaging with the community about recreation programs and services and making it part of our planning efforts. You know, we regularly get and receive feedback. We do post, you know, we do evaluations on our programs after they're over, get tons of feedback from the community, talking to people, listening to people. But we really found it valuable and beneficial to reach out through a survey and to gather that input, asking them, you know, please tell us a little bit more about how we're doing. What do you like? What don't you like? What do you want? You know, that was really helpful. And I think that, you know, this is a process we'd really like to engage in every few years or so.
Sorry. Councilmember Joe.
Brian, thank you, you know, for that last comment about how you're following up. I'd like to put that comment in the context of the swim programs and facilities. It looked like on the survey page, aquatics and pool had an 18% or so somewhat unsatisfied to very unsatisfied survey return. And then in the survey follow-up, for top additional requested programs, there was a strong desire for swim lessons, increased pool capacity, and additional aquatic facilities. My question is, we're looking at potentially expanding the pool, and I wanted to see how you were taking those two pieces of information and any other information you're getting about the pool to help structure or facilitate a conversation with the public about potentially expanding that facility?
We've currently started a Friends of the Julius Bone Pool group, in which we just had our first meeting, in which we're sharing some of this information from, we're going to be sharing the information from the survey. We're going to be talking about the work that we're doing, about seeking like, if this, you know, this proposal, how does it sound to everybody? Because right now, it just is, it's an idea, it's a thought, right? So we're thinking about that and trying to float it out with all the information to see what does the community think and feel about this. We have a webpage that's been set up explaining the potential for this project, along with a couple of questions. And as of, I think, this morning, we had close to 1,200 responses to that, which is outstanding as far as surveys go. So we're still in the process of gathering a lot of that data to inform, be informed by the public on what maybe they would, their hopes and desires are.
Brian, that's great that you have such a strong response. I know that we had one of the coaches from the high school swim team also come and talk to us about the pool. How are you integrating their comments and their feelings and desires for the pool into that process as well?
Oh, great question. We're integrating them in the process with their full body. We have them as part of our friends group. So that, that coach you're speaking of, we have her on it. We have the IST swim coach, we have community members. We have, yeah, representatives of the pool in many different shapes and forms. We've tried to, we know a lot of the people that use the pool, right? But we're also trying to grab some people from the community that just are part of the community, right? So it's been nice to try to engage as many, a diverse group, to speak about what this potential project could look like.
Great. And this is my last pool question. The bond is coming up for the school district, and I know that they have included the pool in one of their projects that's going to be in the entire package. The council's going to be considering our endorsement of the bond package at an upcoming meeting. How has the school district been also included in that conversation?
Great question. School district was part of our pool feasibility study. We had a couple of their team members as part of that feasibility study, and Jeff is actively engaged with speaking with their leadership about this project and about the work we're doing. I don't know if you want to add anything to that one or not, but we're engaging them in the process through their leadership and our leadership.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the information.
Carry on.
Thank you. Below are the topics we discussed. And as we move into the direction needed, we'd be happy to answer and discuss any questions that you may have.
Do you want to tee up the direction needed rubric before?
I'd be happy to read them again, yes, absolutely. The direction needed. One, is there any additional feedback for staff to consider while conducting further internal review and gathering resident input about city recreation programs and services? And two, as we plan for the '25-'26 budget cycle, are there any considerations or priorities you would like us to address in the ongoing efforts to enhance recreation programs?
So I have a couple of questions. You mentioned the Down Home Fourth of July being added this year. Haven't we had the Down Home Fourth of July since forever?
You're right, it has been around for a very long time. I don't know if I ever was in that one, but I, we have had it for a long time. Yes, recently, this year, it was run by the Recreation Services Department. Last year, the city also ran it. Last year, the city also ran it, and we built upon the good work that the city did, because last year almost didn't happen without the city stepping in and doing some, making it happen. But we built upon the good work that they did last year, and the rec services team, which I work with, ran it this year. And like I said, and I say the rec servicing, it's many hands, it's many departments, many divisions, many volunteers, so it's, yeah, and on no means it's not just Recreation Services, but it's many hands that make that magic happen.
Excellent. And then the other question I have is really around, I think you mentioned that this, you got input from the Equity Board, I think?
Yeah.
How do you go about addressing equity on recreation things? And I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna make personal favorite, right, cricket pitches, right? There may or there may not be pent-up demand in the community for cricket pitches, but there's other things that I haven't even thought of, because I'm a Polish-American, and so how do you make sure that we've covered, we have a lot of, just a whole range of folks in the community, and you've asked some good questions in engaging the public, but how do you know that you've teased out the demands that are out there in the community and having such a diversity?
Good question, and I don't know that we ever tease them all out, I think we continue to try to tease them out, but with that, like the cricket pitches, that's been on our radar for quite, I'll use that as an example, you know, it's been, but we, we don't let those things drop, we keep them on our radar, and I think for future planning, as we get a chance and opportunity to develop something, that's gotta be a part of that planning process and part of the possibilities of what could be done as we develop and grow into our future.
So how on that one? Let's say I was, let's say I was a member of the South Asian community, how would I have gotten the input in about cricket pitches in this process?
Oh, go ahead. Again, great question, great question. Merging into sort of our parks system plan, right? So this is where our department sort of ties together in terms of us doing direct programs, but also how we steward those public spaces. And so, you know, I would say it really starts either way with that community outreach and those conversations, us getting a sense of what need is, and then whether it's programmatic or whether it's infrastructure and capital, how do we start folding that into our system plan or our six-year CIP or our budgeting process? So in particular, cricket is a great example, because we have been having some really good conversations with that community and understanding it's not, building any athletic field here in town is not a quick endeavor, so how do we utilize our existing fields to meet that cricket need currently? And so that group, we have a group renting Central Park fields, we've created some modifications up at Central Park and allowed cricket pitches to be sort of accessible through the two soccer fields. As you may know, anyone at home listening, a typical cricket pitch takes two, two full-size soccer fields, so imagine those two full-size soccer fields with a cricket pitch right in between them is what we're able to do. And so we're continuing looking at innovation programmatically or infrastructure-wise, but it really starts with those conversations. And I would add, I think our conversation with the Equity Board was a great example, because that really, the conversation started with access and information for registering for our programs. How do we ensure that all the community knows what's available and has access to those programs? That quickly diverged into not only a sort of a registration conversation, but also this very conversation of programmatic, creating new programs, creating programs that are meeting community, all residents within, within the community. So I would say that is not going to be a one-time conversation, that really becomes perpetual, and kind of like we've been saying, this, the idea of enhancing rec programs is not a, boy, let's accomplish it in 2024 and then we're done. It really is that mindset and posture moving forward.
I, I just, I just wonder, I mean, I used a cricket pitch as an example for the South Asian community. Also have an East Asian community, we have a Hispanic community in town. I happen to know soccer's quite popular in Hispanic community because I got to watch Argentina versus Colombia, the Copa Americana, a couple of weeks ago, but there's other sports as well. And so I just, I just wonder how we know that we've gotten the feedback in those communities, because those communities are historically underrepresented at city council meetings, right? They don't tend to write in as much, and I just don't know how we get confidence that we've, that we've teased out those inputs, rather than just the usual suspects who've been coming to us for 50 years for recreational opportunities, pools and soccer fields.
I guess a great question and comment. I think there are some metrics, I think one very measurable metric is participation. What are we seeing? Who is participating in our programs? Who is renting our fields? Who's using our parks? That's something we really try and track and keep, be aware of. So I think for a future meeting, we could, we could come back with some of that feedback and share with you what we're seeing and the conversations we're really having internally.
I think that'd be great, I think that would help me personally, just to understand, that would be good to see who is using the field and not using it. Other questions? Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. I had a question about participation in terms of the survey participation. We certainly have an active website where people can log on and then participate in the survey. Do we do anything to actively try to find participants when they're involved in our programs or they're, you know, at the end of a season or any type of outreach like that?
Are you talking about like, how did we get the survey out into the hands of the public?
Yes, partially, that's, but I guess I'll use just my own experience when I was, when my kid was playing basketball, yes, I was probably mad at the refs when I was leaving, but it would be a great opportunity for me to also do a survey on the basketball program, for instance, and if there were a QR code as I'm leaving the gym that I could just scan and then have it on my phone for later when I had some time to fill it out, or if we handed out little sheets during some of the events or at the end of the rec program on a Wednesday afternoon with a QR code, so moms and dads could go home and fill it out when they get home. Do we do anything like that so that we can kind of capture the people that are using the programs and give them an opportunity to give feedback?
Yes, and most of our programs, especially with our larger programs, we do a post-program evaluation where we reach out to the parents and coaches, get feedback from them on the programs. In particular, with this recreation program survey, survey, you know, we reached out to everybody in our database that was a participant, so that was great. Communications was a great help in pushing out through all the social media. For some of our seniors, we made hard copies, right, because our seniors, some of our seniors are still working on hard copies type of thing, so we, we set them up and they, some don't notice, so we actually let them handwrite stuff, and then they were inputted for them by the staff at the community center. We worked with Monica Negrilla and her team to try to reach out some of those populations that you were talking about, Chair Martz, about the, you know, how do we try to get it to some of those populations that we're not maybe seeing or not as familiar with, but that they are? So we use that human services team and tried to leverage some of our partnerships and some of our friends to help push that out to a variety of people.
Great, I'm glad we're trying to cast a wide net, as the chairman pointed out, and hope we continue to do that so that we can really get a good hand on, handle on the opinions of our community. Thank you.
So I'm going to ask if there are any other questions before we get to, I'm gonna, I'm actually going to see once more if there's any public comment before we get to the actual direction needed. Any other questions we want to ask before that? Nope? All right, so clerk, I will ask again, is there any indication that any members of the public wish to speak on this topic?
Chair Martz, we have no members of the public in attendance, either in person or virtually.
I'm sure they're just watching at home and not on the web. Okay, so now to feedback on these rubrics. Deputy Council President.
There we go. Well, first of all, appreciation for the work that you do. This is, you know, one of our most popular departments, and we love it. Couple of things I wanted to point out, I think, first of all, I was really pleased when you added adaptive recreation, and just a reminder that that is a significant diversity and equity addition that serves a specific population that really often is overlooked, and so I'm really, really pleased that that was added to your programming. From looking at that chart with the survey question on it, it seems to me that the biggest complaint is that people can't get in, which is a pretty nice complaint in a way, because I don't hear a lot of dissatisfaction with what is going on or problems with the programs themselves. I'm hearing, I wish that I could get my kids into this, I wish, you know, I could get myself into, which is a big problem, because we're, you know, how do we fund everything that we want to do? But, so you're commended for the quality of the programming that you are providing, and I wish that we could, and I hope that we can find some ways to expand the opportunities for people in our community. I share Councilmember Joe and Chair Martz's concern about hearing from people that we maybe don't ordinarily hear from, and I'm sure that you're doing, trying really hard to do that, but I think that would be just a general concern that this group and the whole council would, would be interested in hearing more about. I think there, let's see, the question was, is there anything more that you could be doing? It seems like you're doing a whole lot already, so I don't have any further considerations or additional feedback or communications on that. And as well for the, I liked what Brian had to say about, sometimes programs come to an end and we need to review them and look where else we can deploy. That's the sort of a continuous improvement approach to, to the programming, and I think if that's in place, then you're being very alert to the changing needs and concerns of our community. So I honestly don't have anything to add to the discussion, I think you're doing a very thorough job. I'm thrilled with the number of participants in this survey and the ones on the pool, oh my gosh, that is amazing. When I was at King County, we did community outreach, we would have been thrilled with 1,200 responses on many, many of the surveys we did, so you're commended there as well. So that is my input, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. In terms of additional feedback, I think you're doing a great job trying to reach out to the community and the hard-to-reach populations, whether it's those that do adaptive recreation or those that are in our minority communities in town that may not be actively doing surveys or have it as part of their day-to-day lives, so to speak. Not that I sit around and fill out surveys all day or anything, but the point is that you're trying to do everything you can to reach out to the populations that are there, and I do appreciate that. It is going to guide a number of our decisions going forward in terms of the pool, where we do park expansions, or do we put a second dog park out there, and those type of, type of questions, so I appreciate that. As we plan for the '25-'26 budget cycle, I'll just comment that Parks and Rec is not all about programs necessarily. You have done some fantastic improvements to Confluence Park in terms of better turf, putting nice barriers on the creek so that the stream can go ahead and, and do what it does when it floods and provide the nutrition to the soil that's supposed to be there. Those enhancements are important, and they're appreciated by those that aren't necessarily in active rec programs but like to use our parks and open spaces. So I would encourage you to continue to find smart economical ways to do those improvements. I know that sometimes you use volunteers for some of the plantings, this is an example, and some of the trail maintenance that you do, so those type of improvements are seen by the public, and they're appreciated by the people that aren't necessarily in the active programs themselves. So just wanted to pass that on and have you please look out for opportunities to continue that work. Thank you.
Thank you. So just a couple of thoughts on things. Thrilled to see Kathy Jones is still over at the rec center, my kids, you know, you've all heard before, my daughter had a transformative experience being associated with that rec, the rec center, and of course with the Youth Advisory Board and our partnership with the, with the school district there. Can you, I just, if, can you go back to the slide that showed the percentages for a second? Because there's something in there that just makes my week. There we go. So, oh, no, you're there, there we go. So the senior center programs, you know, I was on council seven years ago when, you know, this is such an important program for, it's such a critical program for a section of our community, and it was, there was so much uncertainty when we took over that program, and I just want to say thank you so much to see such, such knocking it out of the park in such a vital program, that so many people are just so concerned, you know, that if we drop the ball, this is a really vital part of their lives and a part of their days. So I just, I just have to point that out, how happy that makes me, that seven years later, we're chugging along so well. I don't know if I have much to add that I haven't already talked about, you know, I always just wonder, you know, we have the folks who, a lot of folks in our community, they get involved, like me, through PTA in their schools, and from schools they get involved in, you know, whether it's soccer or, or other sports, swimming, whatnot, that's a natural conduit for those folks to get involved and let you all know what they want. And, you know, for folks that don't have kids that come through the schools or that don't get involved in some of those structured activities, I just always wonder, you know, how, where they're at. 1,200 is certainly a great number, and that's a non-trivial fraction of all the households in, in the, in the community, right? But, you know, I just encourage, continue to look for opportunities to, as we said, tease out where, where the interests are. You know, parks are such a key element in how we see ourselves as a community, right? You know, we talk so much about the core issues of, you know, water coming out of the tap and things flushing and, you know, being able to call the police and call fire department, but, you know, with parks, you really get into the more aspirational side, and you get beyond those, those, you know, what are just the basics of daily life into the, the parts that really make life sweet. And we're so blessed with the natural resources that we have here, and you all, I think, do a great job of leveraging that in how, in how we build our recreational programs and parks programs here. So I don't have a lot to add, I think this was, this is good data, I'll look, I'll be excited as you continue to, you know, to build off of it and come back to us for, with further programs. I don't, I think, oh yeah, please, round two.
Yeah, I, when, on the farmer's market, I think you said, you know, this is great data from our community, and I just want to share that when I'm on my regional committees or meeting with regional people, I can't tell you how many times, you know, people will say, oh, you have the greatest farmer's market, Issaquah is the greatest farmer's market, or I come over to Issaquah because I go to your farmer's market. It really is a highlight for our region and not just, you know, Issaquah. It is a beautifully run, you know, really well, well, well-done farmer's market. And so anyway, I mean, we could praise, we could go through, should we go through each one of these programs and praise them, but I think, like you said, farmer's market, that's a really nice affirmation from our community, but I hear very much the same thing from regional people as well.
So at this point, I will turn to City Minister Bob Kowitz and ask the question, which is, have you gotten the feedback you were looking for from us on this item?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate the committee's discussions as we look at budget for '25-'26. It's important to get this important feedback, so thank you.
Brian?
Yeah, thank you. No, and thank you for the accolades, much appreciated, but I would like to point out, you know, none of this happens without you all. It doesn't happen out without your support, without the support of our administration, and honestly, it's so many hands, it's all the different departments. I mean, we work with communications and public works and park ops and facilities, I mean, every department in the city often helps with a variety of our programming in one way, shape, or another, and it wouldn't happen if it weren't for the many hands that are involved, so thank you for your support.
And thanks for coming in this evening to talk to us. Now, with that, we're going to move on to COM 0048, Urban Forest Management Plan Update with Dan Heinz, our urban forest supervisor. with Dan Hints, our urban forest supervisor with Parks and Community Services.
As Dan is making his way up, I'd love to give an introduction as well. Jeff Watling, again, thank you so much. Great conversation tonight. You may recall in the 2018 adopted Park Strategic Plan, one of the key operational goals was to initiate urban forest, urban forest management and the Green Issaquah Program. Thanks so much to your support. Green Issaquah is growing and quite frankly thriving in its work. And we've also hired last year our first urban forest manager, Dan Hints, who will be coming up and giving this overview. One of, one of Dan's first tasks was to endeavor into this work and crafting, working with the community to create the city's first urban forest management plan. And he's done a great job leading this effort and also done so much in the field already. When you look at our parks and open spaces, we talk about, as I said earlier, we invest in places. Our well over 1,500 acres of open space does not take care of itself alone. And so thank you for your support, getting ahead of this, understanding the importance of our urban forest, truly managing and stewarding that urban forest. It's a responsibility that we have now and, and well into the future. What you'll also hear tonight is there are multiple benefits of that forest. The benefits that it gives us for livability, the benefits it gives to wildlife, the benefits it gives to climate are, are really, really key. So I'm proud to introduce Dan Hints, come on up and give this overview. Thanks for that chance to give an intro.
Thank you, Director Watling. Dan Hints, I apologize for getting your name slightly wrong there.
Jeff, thank you for the introduction. Also, thank you for having me here tonight to present on the development of the city's first urban forest management plan. Before I kind of dive in, I do want to mention that Chris Pfeifer, our lead consultant with Planet Geo is attending virtually. He'll be available during the question and answer session if there's some things that he might have a little bit more information to weigh on than I do. So, hi Chris, thanks for joining us. Um, as Jeff mentioned, you know, my, my role was created about a year and a half ago. I've, I've been in this role a year and a few months now. And that was really the start of the city investing in the development of our, you know, first formal urban forestry program. And really a foundational piece of any urban forest program is having an urban forest management plan. Essentially having a plan that serves as a roadmap and a guide to build this program that will support the long-term health of our urban forests, as Jeff kind of mentioned, promoting and enhancing the multitude of benefits our trees and forests provide our community. And we'll get into those a little bit more in the next few slides, but obviously that's environmental, that's economic, that's social, and, you know, certainly health benefits too, that, that our trees provide here in Issaquah. So kind of purpose of the presentation tonight is to provide the Services, Safety and Parks Committee an update and seek input from the committee on the progress to date, our draft vision statement for the urban forest management plan, and five guiding principles that we've developed that will really kind of organize the framework of the plan and, you know, have sets of goals and strategies for each of those guiding principles. So the direction needed and similar, I'm sure you all are normally aware of this, a slide will come back at the end here, but seeking direction from the committee on specifically any additional feedback for staff to consider while finalizing the draft plan. And are there any additional considerations for the park board to study, analyze prior to their recommendation of the plan to city council? That should have been later this fall, I think that slide didn't get updated there. Apologies for that. So looking at fall and we'll have a timeline update here. So we started working with Planet Geo back in, under contract back in October of 2023. And we kind of have four kind of main steps along the process of developing this plan. I'll get into these a little bit more detail as we kind of wrap up process and inputs that led to the vision statement and the guiding principles that we've developed to date. But initially that was a little bit more behind the scenes focusing on, you know, what we call baseline assessment. That is really, you know, kind of reviewing a lot of the existing plans, policies, city ordinances and code as it relates to trees in Issaquah. At the end of last year, as we kind of turned the calendar into 2024, we really focused on internal staff survey and engagement, the public outreach process. Chair Martz, it's great to hear that, yeah, the public data, we'll, we'll kind of highlight here over the next couple of slides and had a lot of good feedback from our community in, in March and early April as part of that process. And started to bring in this primarily have been bringing this to the park board and environmental board, multiple touchpoints with both those boards since the fall and more to come. We are kind of wrapping up the third phase here of goals and strategies. And that's where we have this, you know, draft plan coming with our, excuse me, our draft vision and guiding principles. And then we'll have the plan development and delivery here by the end of September. And that will go to the park board at the end of September, the goal with recommendation to bring back to this committee and to full council, hopefully sometime in November, possibly December. The goal is to have this wrapped up definitely before the end of this year. Well, some of those kind of subbullets on the last one, I'll get into a little bit more on, on a future slide here. But the next two slides do get into public feedback as part of our community outreach process, kind of late winter, early spring this year. We had a survey that we shared out through our Typeform platform, working with our communications team and Planet Geo to design that survey. We had 235 responses, some information here on kind of demographics in terms of parts of the city. I think, you know, it was pretty well spread out, but, you know, the highest was on Squawk Mountain at 17%. Fair amount from Issaquah Highlands at 11%. And, you know, a fair amount of people didn't provide a geographic response to the survey too. I know Chris kind of mentioned too, that, you know, he was kind of excited to see that there was a little bit better representation from, I guess millennials on this one at 40% as often, you know, the percentage of 55 and older is a little bit higher in surveys like this. So I think that was good to see as part of this plan, but you can see in the upper right corner there of this slide, a little bit of a breakdown on the ages of responses we got through the survey. 3% under 18, could have, could have done a little bit better there, but we had a little bit of the, the youth voice and, and some more direct targeted meetings with Issaquah Garage and a few other kind of youth related groups in Issaquah too. So, um, this is, the final kind of graphic on this slide is a little unrelated to the demographics and gets into a partnership that we did with the University of Washington Evans School. They have consulting teams, if you're familiar with that, the units are graduating students, masters in public policy. So I partnered on this with David Reedy with our sustainability team here in Issaquah and really looking as different opportunities to try to meet our 55% canopy goal in our Issaquah Climate Action Plan. How do we as a city, you know, better invest, you know, not just on our public parks and open spaces, but also on private properties here's in, here in Issaquah? So the survey also, if people, you know, said they were able to plant trees on private property, kind of their interest level, their knowledge and skills to do that, we, we learned that there's a lot of like, hey, we want to do this, we just don't know quite how or quite how to, you know, select the right species or care for trees. And then really kind of developed, you know, kind of what the scale of a program like this could look like. And this is something we're hoping to implement and launch in fall of 2025 with our sustainability team.
And I think we have, I think we have a question from the Deputy Council President.
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I and Russell Joe also, we live in multifamily. And so did you approach multifamily condominiums and apartments to see if any of those complexes would like to add trees to their properties?
As part of the Evans School research, there was some of that. It was a little hard to track down management on some of these, especially in a little bit shorter timeframe. We had a little bit better success, granted more single family with some of the larger HOAs in the city. But yeah, so also looking at commercial properties too as part of that.
Oh, great.
Research with the Evans team and, and, you know, trying to kind of figure out how that process could look. But yeah, I would say it was definitely a little bit more skewed to single family.
Yeah, all right. Well, yeah, but thank you for making the effort. And I, I think that would be a good thing to pursue as well because, you know, a lot of them have open land.
Yes.
That could be treed.
Yes.
So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So moving forward into a little bit more of the, you know, kind of content that came out of the public survey, kind of starting in the top left quadrant there, were kind of primary concerns or issues we heard from the public. 35% invasive plants and species, you know, that's something that's on top, a top of mind for people and obviously a big part of our Green Issaquah program, trying to address the impacts that our invasive plant species have on our forests here in Issaquah. Wildfires and harmful tree pests or diseases is also high up there at 20%. Lots of questions on, you know, what we're doing to prepare for wildfire, what forest management looks like as part of that need. It was really neat that actually this past weekend, we partnered with Jared Schneider, the city's emergency response manager on the first chipper days up on Squawk Mountain, on Squawk Mountain Loop. And, you know, while we met with 10 homes and, you know, hauled out a fair amount of material, you know, really the goal is also just kind of education outreach and I think kind of building that goodwill to that neighborhood that, you know, does have a lot of concerns, you know, where they're located up there around wildfire. So I think that was a really neat collaboration and hopefully a model we can build off of. You know, pests and disease, you hear a lot about Emerald Ash Borer, which is something that has just started to make its way to the Northwest and has decimated whole populations of ash trees in the Midwest and the East Coast. And they've just identified it in Portland and Vancouver. So it's likely in Washington and kind of a matter of time till we, till we find that here in Issaquah and the King County area. So really trying to prepare for these things, get ahead of the curve and, and, you know, kind of partner with the regional and, you know, state organizations on kind of best practices for obviously wildfire preparedness and, and pest and diseases. Infrastructure damage definitely came up, you know, working sidewalks, conflicts with trees there, trees and tree limbs falling. So essentially tree risk, risk assessment and kind of management we're doing there as it relates to our trees in the.
Can I just pause it just for a second? So when you were talking about that ash borer.
Yes.
I'm, I'm from the Twin Cities and we had majestic elms on every street in Minneapolis, right? And they all came down because of Dutch elm disease.
Yes.
Is there, is there some way that we're doing urban forestry that is making us particularly at risk for these sorts of uni species like this? I mean, like I have to imagine that in Minneapolis, if we hadn't had, been so reliant on elms, we would, Dutch elm wouldn't have torn through the, the community as much as it did. Is there, are there lessons from things like this ash porter?
I, I think so, definitely. You know, and I'll touch on this on in the next slide here, a need for a tree inventory and essentially knowing what the composition of species or that's at the genus level, you know, step up from species that are generally going to be, you know, susceptible to some of these pests and diseases. So there's, there's a pretty strong rule of thumb today, you know, obviously species diversity, more tree diversity, not relying too heavily. Cities plant ashes and maples like crazy. And, you know, I think we're realizing that we should be kind of backing off and looking at, you know, diversifying the species. And you'll see rules of thumb of trying not to have more than 10% from the same genera of plants like the ash family. So that's something I think we're learning that it doesn't mean that you're not going to lose that 10%, but it's not going to have the, you know, kind of monumental consequences that Dutch elm disease or before that, the American chestnut blight, you know, in the early part of the 20th century had where there were such ubiquitous, you know, street trees that just got wiped out. So then also it's, you know, how we spread these as vectors, proper pruning techniques, you know, there's a lot of guidance on when to prune and work with ash trees when it's less likely to spread the, the beetles, you know, during their, you know, kind of active seasons. So learning, but I wouldn't say learning to the point where we, we can avoid this necessarily. It's kind of minimizing or mitigating the, the impacts it has.
Do we have risks on our hillsides? Cause I, I think of my own property and I think it's primarily firs and maples. When these, in these second and third growth forests that we have, I mean, Squawk got, you know, harvested 100 years ago and they, they planted on it. Do we have, are these, you know, I, I think those two, I think those two genuses represent probably 80% of the trees on my property.
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. And yeah, we, we do have a native species of ash, but it is not real common. You see it a little bit more in wetlands, kind of lower part of the valley, really not in the forested hillside much at all. So we do have some along Issaquah Creek, but it's, it's a small fraction of our kind of native tree composition. And then some of the species you're talking about, I mean, there's certainly naturally occurring diseases and pests that can have issues, you know, laminated root lots, one with a lot of our conifers, Douglas fir, grand fir, you know, so there are issues that kind of small populations can cause, you know, some, some die off or need to remove to keep things from spreading. But, you know, luckily we're not dealing with the issues of like the Japanese pine beetle that a lot of the Mountain West is seeing or things that are, you know, really wiping out large scale, you know, native tree populations in our, in, in the cascades or foothills here. Obviously climate's another conversation we'll talk about here a little bit too, but.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Um, so and then the last one.
Sorry, whoop, whoop, sorry. Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. Could you go back one slide, please? Lower right hand corner, we talked about level of interest in planting more trees on their property. You just touched on the climate concern. And we do talk about having the right tree in the right place can make a big difference in terms of, you know, the sidewalk getting disrupted, you know, gutter problems for, for houses. Has there been kind of the next question beyond the, the survey results, has there been any discussion about either right tree in the right place, kind of touching on the chairman's questions? Or has there been any discussion about educating the public about what trees might be best in our changing climate?
Absolutely. Discussions are on the way, but I wouldn't say we're at the point yet where we're, you know, have, have the tools to communicate that adequately to the public. But I think that is going to be informed a lot by this urban forest management plan and certainly some of the goals. You're seeing a lot of bigger cities like Vancouver, Seattle, Portland essentially develop climate adapted tree species lists. So essentially selecting species through the lens of, you know, what's, which ones we think are going to be more adapted to our changing climates versus which ones we're seeing fail. Obviously a lot of that is, you know, size for planting space. We, we do have a lot of trees that were put in inadequate planting spaces, especially in our urban villages like Talos and Issaquah Highlands where we're seeing those now 20 or 30 years, starting to cause a lot of these infrastructure issues and even fail in, in some, you know, storm conditions because of inadequate planting space. So it's, you know, it's tough because the public loves those big majestic ash and oak trees on Park Drive, but we also are causing a lot of sidewalk, you know, lifting there too and trying to figure out like, do we need to downsize, you know, how, how that would be received by the public? And these are definitely conversations we've been having with Issaquah Highlands Community Association. And generally they're worse in the foothills and in the valley where we have much better soil and deeper soil than the kind of glacial till of the, of the hillsides we have where it's just really shallow and then obviously it's been scraped a lot by development. So, so hopefully that answers your question, Councilmember Joe, but it definitely, definitely a big part generally in the urban forestry field and certainly what we're working on here in Issaquah.
Yeah, thank you. I just hope that we can integrate it into our education so that we can have a healthy tree canopy. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Jumping back to, to this slide here, the, the last one kind of on concerns is certainly navigating the tree permitting process and regulations, especially with our updated tree preservation code of last June. So that's something I'm also, you know, trying to work on with community planning department on how we can do more education there. Bottom left there, these kind of get at the actions or initiatives that were, you know, kind of prioritized by the public survey here. Keep in mind, they were able to answer or select more than one answer here. So these of course don't add up to 100%, but you can kind of see how they're weighted relative to each other. And I think people want to see all of this, you know, is, is what we kind of are finding here, you know, from obviously more public education and raising awareness as, as we were just talking about as it relates to the climate change, data-driven management approaches, incentivizing tree care and planting on private property. We talked about that briefly with that UW Evans partnership we had this first half of this year, increased tree planting in underserved areas and development of green infrastructure and spaces, open spaces, which I think really ties to some of the priorities in the park system plan too, around connectivity and, and connections through trails and green spaces and more maintained park areas. The importance of engagement, public engagement initiatives, these are the ones that ranked highest, that's very important, volunteer events. And, you know, we've really done a lot of work growing Green Issaquah and have our, you know, Green Issaquah volunteer coordinator. We had over 3,000 volunteer hours last year and are well on track to surpass that number this year. That's a program that we've been really proud to see how we've really kind of run with that and are dedicating, or have dedicated volunteers, our forest stewards that are ongoing volunteers and adopt areas and lead some of their own events. So that's been really, really great to see that take off, but still room for growth there. Workforce development, training and job placement, that one was interesting to see, get as much support as it does, or it did here in the survey. That's obviously an area for growth, but we have been working with Gibson Eck. We're trying to make more progress with Isco High School. We had two interns through Gibson Eck last year with our urban forestry program and have worked with a lot of their design labs and really have some room to grow with, with Isco High School as well in terms of connecting with some of their environmental programming. And then last but not least is contributing to citizen science. So I think this is really interesting and local research efforts. We have really been taking on the coexisting with carnivores efforts as part of our urban forest team and really educating around, you know, these animals that live and how we can best coexist with them in our community here. And some of that is carnivore spotter. Actually, our park rangers are regularly working with people from the public to educate on, you know, what to do, what not to do and how to document some of these observations. And it was really neat too, our Green Issa coordinator this year worked with Liden Park Zoo to continue amphibian studies on Tradition Plateau at Round Lake with volunteers twice a month for most of the spring months. There's a lot of amphibians that use Round Lake as, uh, uh, they're, they're essentially their breeding grounds. So, so but lots, lots of room for growth on this stuff too. So last is the vision for the urban forest. The top response was serving as a refuge for wildlife and biodiversity, which. serving as a refuge for wildlife and biodiversity, which we've touched on, contributing to environmental health and air quality, expanding the green space network, combating climate change, which we talked about briefly, and then preserving the city's historical identity. I interpreted that as, you know, people view this place as big trees, forest, rivers, connections to lakes and you know, really wanting to make sure we, you know, maintain that and balance that with obviously people needing to live, people needing to get around the city too. So moving to the next two slides or an update on our.
Oh, sorry. Oh, hold on. More. Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. Before you, you leave that last slide, serves as a refuge for wildlife and biodiversity. And then also the, the subject you talked about in terms of living with carnivores, looking at, you know, what we're doing for wildlife passage over I-90 as we head up, you know, over the pass. Have we thought about, or do we have a urban, a forest corridor for our wildlife that we've thought about? And I'll just reflect on, I, I used to live at the end of Mount Everest Lane and the city recently brought, bought a property that was close to my old house. And I was happy that they did that because it often was a corridor for bears going through and bobcats and, and the deer. Has there been any thought to making sure that we have a, a forest highway, so to speak, for our wildlife so that they can stay safe and apart from humans and, and the cars and the vehicles that could do them harm?
I've, I've had some preliminary conversations. Jeff, I don't know if you have anything to weigh into that or maybe a little bit later here. I have a couple of thoughts, but you know, what, what areas, I, I think, you know, obviously we're going to talk in a couple of slides here about our riparian canopy analysis and riparian areas certainly as a wildlife corridor. But I think there's certainly needs connecting between the Isico Alps, you know, Tiger Mountain to Squawk to Cougar. I would say from my experience, one of the area that would be really high priority would be Isico Hobart Road where, I mean, the, the conservation of Park Point, I think was a huge win for connectivity between essentially one of the narrowest parts of the valley there between Tiger Mountain, Squawk Mountain. We see a lot of wildlife using that area to get to Isico Creek and in between those spots. That's where we have one of our wildlife cameras with Woodland Park Zoo at Park Point there behind the LDS church. We've had kind of like pipe dream sessions around, yeah, what would wildlife crossings or under crossings look like there? Cause the road obviously is an impediment. But in terms of a formal comprehensive wildlife corridor study, I've certainly heard interest from the community, but I, I don't know if I can speak to any immediate plans for that or what that would look like.
Just a quick add, yeah, I think both this effort and the park system plan update has really sort of talked around the edges of that and certainly identified supporting wildlife and having corridors for wildlife as goals within each of those. But an actual wildlife corridor study is not something that the, the city is engaged in yet, but it would, could be a, a future endeavor.
Yeah, perhaps we don't need a, a formal study, but we could look at the map from the area. And if we see that Isico Hobart Road has a place where there's a, 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 not a safe area for wildlife to cross, could we create one with low cost brush and trees, et cetera, on both sides of the road and perhaps a, a slow zone for cars to bring that speed down a little bit as they go. Probably need a little coordination with our state partners there, but anything we can do to create a, a system that the wildlife can, can move about and get to the food and get to the places they need to get to without interacting or being potentially harmed would, would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And let me follow up on that. Are we aware of any places in town where we have a particularly high, I don't even know what the word is, I'll just say roadkill issue?
Isico Hobart for sure. Our, our park rangers, and luckily it's, it's usually not carnivores, but, but deer on Isico Hobart. Yeah, our, our park rangers, since I've been here have dealt with four to five deer carcass on Isico Hobart, beaver carcass actually, smaller animals of course too. I, I, that, that is at least what I've observed and of course is visible with a high amount of traffic that passes through there.
And is there a particular stretch of Isico Hobart Road where that occurs?
I've seen it from Front Street essentially across right here from the pool and up to Squawk Valley Park. I mean, obviously that's the end of city limits. So that's my, you know.
So everywhere.
But, but yeah, it's throughout that stretch, you know, essentially leaving town and cars are speeding up as they're exiting the 25 mile an hour speed limit there. So.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So transitioning to the tree canopy assessment update, I think most of you are aware of the city that our first urban tree canopy assessment in 2019, that was with 2017 data. So the data for this high resolution LiDAR imagery that's used for these assessments usually lags one or two years before that's available. So you'll see this bar graph below that looks at the initial assessment and like I said, work done in 2019 with 2017 data, the update we did in the end of 2023 with Planet Geo with 2021 data, and then the original baseline year that was selected in 2019 is of 2011. So you can see, and I think everyone's of course aware of the 55% target there too. So a few just kind of caveats or, or kind of things to think about as, as you ponder this data here. First of all, this is something the plan will recommend re-measuring every four to five years. It is, it is a good indicator for, you know, kind of high level success and work with the urban forest and certainly kind of ties into evaluating success of our tree preservation code as well. These assessments are getting cheaper and cheaper too, which is great as the technology is getting better. Also tree canopy is measured at over 14 feet height. So that takes anywhere from five to 10, even a little bit more depending on the type of plant material for trees that we plant today to then be considered part of our urban tree canopy.
So what is this, what does this actually represent? Like how did we increase a 3% increase in a city that did a lot of building in those 13 years?
It's impressive and significant. And I, I think it's the investment the city's had on, I mean, going back even to the 1990s on land acquisition, especially in the valley along our creeks and the work that the city's been doing, you know, with partners like Isico Alps, Mountains of Sound Greenway, City Led, Open Space Stewards, you know, to, to reforest a lot of these areas. So you'll see in the riparian slide, some of the gains even just in the last four years we've had along Isico Creek on the next slide here. I think also just being smarter about the development and, and we do have some of the stronger tree preservation codes in Western Washington. So I, I am new to this and try to kind of learn that myself, but as a lot of cities are struggling to stay at a certain percentage or even going backwards, I mean, it's pretty impressive that we gained that amount in that timeframe there.
I, I actually, actually have a related question. So we have a few patches of, of serious forest, right? Tradition Plateau, Bear Ridge over on Cougar. I got a lot of concern from the community about the top of Tiger being denuded, whatever it was, two years ago.
Yes.
And are we at risk of that in any of our properties?
No. So our, our city properties on Tradition Plateau are part of the NRCA, the Natural Resource Conservation Area. So we co-manage that with DNR. So it's a mixture of city, city properties and, and state properties. So those are meant to stay in conservation status with, you know, passive recreation, essentially hiking. There are areas as you get on the, you know, kind of Highway 18, kind of backside of Tiger Mountain that are still state forest, working forest. And there's pretty regular timber halls. They're not as visible. They're up roads that only maybe hikers see now and then. But yeah, the, the top part, my understanding is warehouse are held on to that 90 or 100 acres there for the communication towers that they own and lease. So that's actually their biggest kind of investment moneymaker. It wasn't necessarily removing the trees. It was to keep communication lines open for those towers is the explanation I got from DNR as part of that project. So.
You know, I, I didn't communicate it back to council because it's not our land.
Sure.
But there were a lot of people in the community that were very upset. The, the top of Tiger had really been, I mean, there was, there were communication towers, but those towers didn't bother people a tenth as much as that haircut that that whole hilltop took.
My, my, my understanding, there's some talk about transferring that land over to the state now that it has been cut, but I, I have not heard any updates or heard much either, Jeff. So, but yes.
I'm glad to hear that we don't have to worry about that on the lands that we do control.
No, no.
Okay. Thank you.
So kind of picking up as I mentioned, you know, also urban tree canopy is, is really just one metric to evaluate success. So we obviously want to continue to build a program to better maintain our existing tree canopy. And a big part of that, you know, we kind of talked about obviously developing my position, developing this urban forest management plan. I would say the third kind of core foundational piece of an urban forestry program is a tree inventory. And that will be a big recommendation out of this plan and something that we hope to start next year. Through our Green Isiqua Plan, our Green Isiqua 20-year implementation plan that we published a few years ago, we actually have some pretty good data. Chair Marts, like you mentioned, in terms of forest composition in our 1,500 plus acres of forested parks and open spaces. It's not down to the individual tree, but you can see what dominant species, secondary, tertiary species are in, in our management unit areas that we defined as part of that Green Isiqua Plan. So that data is actually great and will be linked into the urban forest management plan. We don't really have any of that for street trees, trees and maintained park areas. I would estimate it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 10 to 15, maybe as high as 20,000 trees that we get into inventory. I've been talking to neighboring cities that have done this recently. There's great funding through the state to, to build out tree inventory. So that's something that will, speaking to the question around pest diseases, you know, getting a much better understanding of the composition of our urban forest and then also the health of it too. So you know, generally tree inventories include what we consider in the arborist field, a basic or level one tree health assessment. So that would be part of that data and then would be integrated into our asset management system that Parks is working to build out here in the next year. So we can, you know, track maintenance, pruning, work orders and all that stuff as it relates to those trees in the built environment. So that will provide a lot of information and help kind of set goals and priorities that we have, you know, a, a much clearer idea of, you know, both the composition and health of our urban forest. And the last thing I would say too, there was a little bit of a discrepancy on the boundaries of Isiqua that was used in the 2019 and 2023 data. You might be familiar that we have the Central Park open space, south of Central Park that is city owned, but not technically within city limits. So that was included in 2019, but not in 2023. So that, that factors in probably a little bit, you know, it's 43 acres. It might be half a percent or something that was excluded in this update. That is, you know, probably 90 to 100% tree canopy there. So there's, there's a lot of nuances. There's a lot of subtleties to this data, but it's still, like I said, a good kind of 30,000 foot view of, of, you know, literally of our canopy and then also our program.
Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. In the climate action plan, one of the goals was to increase community green spaces and increase tree canopy cover to 50, 55% by 2035. Is that 51.9% the same number? Or is that a different number? In other words, do we have to go up by another 4%? Or is it a different apples to oranges comparison?
No, that is, that is the, that is the number. So we are looking at yes, over three and a half percent in the next 11, 12 years. So I know that's something that we'll kind of chat with sustainability as they kind of reassess, you know, goals in the ICAP, you know, approaching the end of the five-year implementation there. And I think that's a, that's a conversation with the community for sure. I mean, in the assessment here, it's not on the slide, but you know, we have this 51% canopy, about 33% of our city is unplantable, which is mostly impervious surfaces. So that leaves about 16%. So we would have to then forest a quarter of our plantable areas. And then you get into conflicts around, you know, utilities, you know, how close we want to plant to houses, especially as we talk about defensible space and wildfire preparedness, you know, with the state building code, updates that are being proposed. So there's a lot of nuances here and I think definitely some needed community conversations on the added benefits that reaching that goal certainly have, but also some of the trade-offs of that space lost. And so I think that, so, so yes, to your question, and I think there, in my opinion, some more community conversation on how realistic that goal is and what that means as, you know, trade-off for land use.
Okay. So the bottom line is if we follow the climate action plan, we want to get to 55% by 2030, increasing by about 3.8% on that number that is on the screen.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Deputy Council, Council President Michelle.
Okay. First of all, you can tell that we love our trees.
This is great.
Lots of questions. So when we're talking about impervious surfaces, are, is there any thinking, and this is maybe a crazy question, but any thinking about how we maybe turn some of those impervious surfaces into pervious surfaces? Get rid of some of our vast parking lots for one thing and roof. I know some people like in New York, they're planting on roofs and things like that. So any of those kinds of plans or thoughts as we're going into this, you know, trying to reach that 55% goal?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't know, Jeff, if you have anything to comment on that or.
No, it's great, Dan. Yeah. Seeing where we actually are in this goal is, it's, it becomes this really critical point in, in conversation. I think as we looked at that, a lot of that 33% is in central Isiqua. So, you know, not an answer tonight, but as we really look and dig into the central Isiqua plan and as there are goals for redevelopment, you know, as that area gets reimagined and redeveloped, how might we add some additional tree canopy as, as those other redevelopment goals are being, being met? Lots of, lots of future conversation and opportunities, but it's going to need to, we're going to need to be really creative.
Yeah. And just as a follow-up, and I think we've talked about this before, the more urban we become, I think we, the last time you were before us, we were talking about the more urban we become, the more precious those green trees and chances for reflection and sitting in a green space become, you know, we don't want a concrete forest in central Isiqua. We want that to be something that people find livable. And so, yeah. So thank you for, thank you for this.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And Dan, how long have you been with the city now?
A year and a couple of months.
God, I, I will tell you, I'm really impressed. You have a vast amount of knowledge and I'm really learning a lot from this presentation. So, so thank you so much. And you've learned a lot in your year and a half with us. So thank you.
Thank you. Also I've, I've lived in the city in my past role, worked with the city, but actually as a city employee, it's still been a fairly short, short period. But, and sorry. And I would say to that, to that point too, yes, you know, micro forest, micro green spaces, there's a lot of research on the benefits there. So we don't need tens of acres, even small little patches. You know, there's a lot of kind of research on the benefits there too. So yeah, I think, I think that's the last I have on this slide. And the next slide here is getting into, which is new for this tree canopy assessment, a specific riparian tree canopy assessment. So I, I think most people are familiar, but just to make sure, you know, riparian is the buffer around our waterways. So lake shores, rivers, and you know, really looked at in ecology is, is, is top priority, you know, critical habitats for wildlife, water quality improvements and, and in more and more stormwater management. So that was really the impetus of us being a, you know, a salmon city and the, the pretty impressive history that Isico has on, on salmon restoration on Isico Creek, you know, to actually kind of establish a baseline of how we're doing with tree canopy in the buffers of our kind of primary salmon bearing streams, which Tibbetts Creek, the north and east forks of Isico Creek, main stem Isico Creek, and the little bit of Lewis Creek and Laughing Jacobs Creek that pass through city limits. We use the regulatory 150-foot stream buffer for this analysis to try to keep that consistent. And you can see essentially these are, you know, the 2017 to 2021. So a four-year change analysis for those streams. The one I am most proud and excited about is Isico Creek, a nine acre gain in the last four years. And I think that really speaks to what I, you know, touched on briefly earlier is that we, we invest a lot on, on acquisition, conservation and restoration along Isico Creek. A big, big part, I would say, you know, at least 50 to 60, 70% of our Green Isiqua work is, is, you know, within that buffer on Isico Creek. So I was really excited to see that. East Fork of Isico Creek, those two acres, my guess is that's probably Confluence Park is a good chunk of that, you know, over those years too. And then you can see a lot of the other systems have stayed static. I think, you know, an interesting analysis that won't be in this plan is, you know, the different land uses, public, private, you know, along these stretches too, which we could certainly use this data to do further analysis like that. But right now we're just looking system-wide. So really to help speak to the salmon recovery goals. And then the last thing I would want to touch on this is that our, I'm working closely with our public works engineering team and our state ecology stormwater permit that we have to submit annually is going to have more and more requirements in the coming years on riparian planning, restoration and canopy goals for riparian areas. So I think we're already doing great work there and this will just better help, you know, set the stage for those needs with, with public works as well.
So there are nonprofits that do riparian work as well, right? On small creeks? Do we partner or engage with those folks at all in our work?
Yes, several of them. So, so Mountains of Sound Greenway Trust is, you know, the big one historically that has done a ton partnering with the city, you know, primarily focusing on Isico Creek. You know, that's where a lot of the funding is derived from for our Chinook salmon, which is a threatened species, as I believe you all know, under the Endangered Species Act. So that's been the big one. We're doing more and more work with Trout Unlimited's local chapter and they're the, they administer the urban wildlife refuge partnership for Lakes of Mamish, which is really cool. So both on the education front, but also in the hands-on stewardship. I would say those are the big two. The city has done a little work in the past with Mid Sound Fisheries, which is the fisheries enhancement group for this area. Then obviously more and more trying to pull in Snokeomi Tribe and you know, make sure that they are having a, you know, voice and some direct involvement in this work too. So those, those are the ones that immediately come to mind.
Thank you.
So this is the last slide, kind of tying this all together before we just have. So this is the last slide, kind of tying this all together before we just have two more slides on the draft vision statement and those five guiding principles that we talked about in the introduction. I'll go through this kind of quick because I kind of touched on this in the timeline, but, you know, the research period, reviewing existing plans and programs, specifications, standards, protocols, analysis is what we really just dove into with some of the tree data, benchmarking, this one I haven't talked about, but, you know, since we've been a Tree City USA city through the Arbor Day Foundation for, I should know this, 31 years? 34 years? It's, I think it's the seventh or eighth longest in the state of Washington. There's about 95 communities in Washington that have Tree City USA status. And annually, we have to submit a report on the funding we've used for, let's say, pruning, tree planting, you know, what our volunteerism looks like, you know, staff. So that benchmarking, this is stuff that Chris worked on at Planet Geo, you know, kind of comparing us to similar-sized cities in the region. And I would say high-level takeaways on that, we invest a lot in tree planting, we invest a lot in volunteerism and maybe not quite as much on tree care and kind of later-life tree maintenance. And I think that's an area, we have a lot of growth there. The Urban Forest Audit is a United States Forest Service protocol that's really looking at, you know, kind of core structures and strategies in an urban forest program. And a lot of that we do have in progress. Obviously, a lot of things in the audit we haven't started, being a very new program, but that's really guides the goals and strategies that will be in this forest management plan is that audit. Then we talked about internal engagement and community engagement quite a bit at the beginning of this presentation. I'll say on the staff engagement, we had a survey filled out by about 55 staff members, which was great. I think I sent it to just 60 or 62 that I thought were, you know, most directly or even somewhat indirectly working with trees. So that was actually really good responses there. And then Chris and I had a fair amount of follow-up, kind of targeted key meetings on themes like climate resiliency, you know, conflicts with infrastructure, and then, you know, certainly plans and policies and our tree code. So that all has kind of brought us to this point where we are today, where we have this vision statement. I'll read this real quick. "Isiqua envisions a thriving urban forest where a diverse and cared-for tree canopy strengthens our community for generations to come. This verdant tapestry will enhance our livability, promote health and well-being, support wildlife and habitat, and contribute to a sustainable future for all." And at the bottom there, we have a few of the, you know, kind of top survey priorities, responses, kind of tying back to that public survey and then the staff survey to just kind of make the connections, that this wasn't, you know, pulled out of thin air. This was really informed by responses we got from the community and from of our city staff, some of my colleagues as well. And then this leads to the, you know, kind of last main slide, content slide here for the Urban Forest Management Plan, is these five guiding principles. I don't think I'll read every, they're kind of, these are sub-vision statements for each of the five principles, but obviously happy to discuss those. But essentially, there's kind of five buckets here, and the first one is equitable and resilient canopy cover. So that's talking about some of the tree canopy goals, that's talking about climate adaptation, you know, looking at, you know, right tree, right place, and also for a changing climate. Equitable is partly tree distribution, but the American Forest has this great tool called the Tree Equity Score, and you can actually look at ratings across sub-areas of Isiqua. Chris would probably know this, but there's at least six or eight or nine within Isiqua. And we do have some slightly lower scores relative to other spots in the city, which makes sense, central Isiqua, Long I-90, where there might be a little bit more air pollution, congestion and things like that. So I think that will help inform some priority planting areas as we talk about kind of that equitable distribution. Obviously, maintenance and management, how we operate day-to-day, you know, that's both in parks, public works. We are interacting with trees almost daily in the city and want to make sure we're following best practices there. Tree preservation and protection kind of gets into our code and policies as it relates to trees in Isiqua. And then, you know, the funding to, you know, provide these level services for essentially all three of those guiding principles above. And then certainly, last but not least, something I'm very passionate about is the, you know, community education, engagement and stewardship. We've been really trying to build that out. It was actually great to see in Brian's presentation, the desire from the Rec Services Survey for more environmental programs. And light bulb went off, it's like, yeah, we need to do better collaboration with the Rec Services team on some of the stuff we're doing through Green Isiqua, essentially environmental programs and essentially, you know, definitely priority building better programs for youth in the city, too. But we're doing a lot of that, where myself, our park rangers, partners we're working with, we've hosted almost two dozen events this year with 300-plus people, you know, other of those are guided hikes, coexisting with carnivores panel we did back in the spring. Been really proud of what we've built there, but we've heard there's a lot of desire for more information on, like I said, right tree, right place, tree care, even from the HOAs for more coordinated efforts on some of their private native growth protection areas. So I think there's still obviously a lot of room to grow on the community education front. So kind of just summarizing this all together, we kind of started with, you know, the purpose of this forest management plan as a foundation for this program, plan timeline and progress to date, community engagement, the tree canopy or the urban tree canopy cover analysis, our vision statement and draft guiding principles. The direction needed, we're seeking direction from the committee on the Urban Forest Management Plan, specifically, is there any additional feedback for staff to consider when finalizing the draft plan? Are there any additional considerations that the park board should study, analyze prior to the recommendation of the plan to city council? Again, sorry, that should be this fall. And next steps, this should be a little bit more accurate on timeframe, is the draft, the first draft should be ready in the next couple of weeks here. We'll be taking that to the Environmental Board in August, making some edits, modifications, bringing a near-complete plan to the park board towards the end of September. Hopefully, they will recommend to move that forward. You know, my understanding, we'd like to bring it back to this committee in October with, you know, possible adoption by the full city council in November. So that is all I have. Maybe I'll go back to this slide here for questions. And thank you.
Thank, questions before we go to feedback? Deputy Counsel President.
Thanks, I didn't catch this earlier, Sol, and this might be a question for City Administrator Bob Quitz. Is there a fiscal impact of this plan and is November perhaps too late for our budget discussions or is there not, is that not relevant to the budget process?
Deputy Counsel President Members of the Committee, good evening. Absolutely, there's budget impacts. You know, I think that the timing of this is the timing of this. We continue to move forward on lots of fronts and lots of topics, and so I don't know that you will see a lot in the '25, '26 budget to directly identify this. I think the tree inventory is probably the top of the list, and so that is something that we will continue to look at and think about. I think a lot of things build from that. As I think you know, we are looking at some very difficult budget questions, and so this will have to be in the mix of that. But, you know, we're not going to be able to wait for this. I think that the tree inventory is something that's in the mix already and we'll have to see what other council priorities there are citywide.
Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. Do we work with or get any guidance from Huge Sound Regional Council on our tree canopy? The reason I'm asked is they do have a section entitled Tree Canopy in there, and they did have a meeting on protecting mature trees while adding housing at their July 18th Growth Management Policy Board meeting. The only reason I know about that is our council president attended that meeting and reported out on it. Do we interact with them and would it be something that might be beneficial for us to look at?
I think, no, I have not at least, and I think that's great. I actually was not aware of that body, but I think that's a great idea. I would say a lot of the high-level tree canopy work is certainly done through DNR's urban forestry program and then a little bit, you know, King Conservation District as well or some of the agencies or organizations we've been more connected with.
And I'll just add that many of our neighbors would look at 51% and say, spectacular, best ever. So, you know, I think a lot of the regional issues are to, you know, even put these topics on the table in some communities on tree canopy. I think we're doing very, very well, you know, as Dan has indicated, you know, there's only so many other places we can plant a tree. And in many, many communities, there's lots of room for growth, so.
No, absolutely. And they do highlight that Tiger Mountain has a 70% tree canopy as one of the highlights. So, you know, they are looking at our neighborhood and our areas that are close to us. So I just thought it would be a good information source, not necessarily that we want to be the highest. Snohomish has a 55.8% canopy and Kitsap a 54.1% canopy. So, you know, it can go higher in some communities, but as Dan pointed out, I think we need to find the right mix for our neighborhoods and our populations, so thank you.
And with that, before we answer the question on direction needed, I will turn to the clerk, Chris, and ask once again, is there, has a horde of folks descended on our online community eager to provide comments on this topic?
Chair Martz, shockingly, the answer is no. We have no members of the public in attendance.
Well, that is disappointing, but that will allow us to move on to the part where we address the questions that are in front of us. So who wants to go first? Deputy Counsel President.
Thank you. Well, first of all, just commending Jeff and Dan and Brian as well, please express. This has been just a most informative evening and I really, really appreciate everything that you're doing. And I did have questions about equity, and Dan, you answered those, so it sounds like we've got a great tool to look at specifically how we can measure equity in relation to the canopy, and that was the only real concern I had. So I don't have any additional feedback and I don't have any additional considerations. I think you've done a most thorough job. This was a really great presentation, so thank you so much. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just, I think you just did a great job and there's nothing more to add to it, so thank you.
Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. I'll echo the comments of my esteemed colleague, Barbie Michelle, and say thank you for the presentation tonight. I'll also, just on a personal note, thank you for your involvement with Friends for Lake Samamish State Park. Appreciate you being on the board, taking an active role in our community beyond just serving as one of our employees that is watching our urban forest. Appreciate that. I think that, again, to kind of echo the conversation or the comment I made on the parks, there are a number of low-cost things that we can do to enhance our parks and there are a number of low-cost things that we can do to enhance our urban forest, whether it's volunteers putting in trails that are properly put in there rather than sliced through in a way that can cause erosion and runoff and problems like that. One of the topics here was that people really appreciate the urban forest, not just for the shade that it provides and the green, but also as a sponge for runoff and making sure that the environment has the capacity to take on that heavy rainfall that we get and then let it out slowly into the streams over time. It's a very important element for us and I'm glad that we're paying attention to the land around the creek, Isiqua Creek specifically, as we're concerned about salmon habitat, but we're also concerned about keeping that stream healthy so that it can continue to support all the animals and the amphibians that might use that stream as well. So I appreciate the work and the tie-in that you see between the urban forest preservation that we've got and the health of the creek and the overall environment. So really appreciate those efforts as well. Those are my comments.
Thanks. Couple thoughts, one around, did you say there's ongoing riparian survey, that we're going to keep doing work on the riparian environment or that's done?
The canopy assessment's done. I think that would be something we would like to track in the future. I think what I mentioned is that our annual stormwater permit through Department of Ecology is going to require more riparian to exactly what Councilmember Joe kind of mentioned, recognizing that, you know, trees serve as green infrastructure and have a lot of benefits in terms of stormwater and runoff before it gets into our waterways. So that's, I think that's where some alignment is, too, where our Public Works team's going to need this kind of information, essentially canopy goals and, you know, assessments of riparian areas. I think it's in the next four or five years, that's going to be more required as part of that annual permit.
Sure, and to that, I would love to see the riparian environment be one of the factors we think about in our land acquisition, right? So we tend to think in terms of trail connectivity and, but, you know, the ability to cool our visiting salmon as they're coming up the creeks is super important. You know, you mentioned measuring canopy and that we can put some numbers to the equity. Okay, then let's do something about that, right? Step one is to measure it, step two is to fix it, right? And it would be nice at some point to get something that talks about by neighborhood or by, you know, you pick the way, but, you know, we talk about it. Those of us who live, are lucky enough to live up, high up on Squawk, we have a lot of tree canopy, but, you know, there's folks that have less and I think that we should think about whether that leads us to any policy to address it. And then the third thing is, I have, also living on Squawk, the downside, is, you know, over the last 15 years, I've seen a number of cautionary examples of tree removal, both legal and non-legal. And even the legal ones, I have seen people have to put in extremely expensive corrective measures because they took down too many trees. You know, we talk about that mountain is beautiful, but it's mainly a giant chunk of igneous rock and it's very easy to unsettle what soil there is on top of it. And I won't name any names, but perhaps even neighbors of mine that have found that it's a quick way to get yourself in a lot of trouble. And I would like us, I would love to see some outreach into the community, again, not shame-based governance, but making people aware that they need to be really, really careful when they remove trees, especially people who live, you know, near critical slope, right? That they can not just get in trouble, not just have a fine associated, but, you know, have to just, you know, these beautiful views that they want to have, you know, they can find themselves needing to do a lot of work to maintain their property if it goes wrong. So I think there's a role for us to help educate the public on being super careful about tree removal. I'd like to see, I think that it's worth seeing if there's some inexpensive ways we can get that message out. Anything else? Round two, anybody? All right, here's where I turn to City Administrator and say, do you have what you need?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, well, Dan, I want to thank you for coming in today. Director Watling, always a pleasure to have you here. And I guess with that, well, on the agenda, do I have a, I don't have any announcements to make. Does anybody have anything they need to bring up? All right, then with that, at 8:18, we are adjourned.